Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Greenwood City Council meeting on this Monday, November the 3rd at 7:03 PM. Ms. Derrick, would you call the road force, please?
Sure thing. A.C. Brown.
Here.
Ralph Maker.
Here.
Senator Zabson.
Roger Reingartner.
Here.
Steve Snedford is absent. Rob Powell is absent. We have a forum with the addition of the mayor.
Thank you very much. If you would all stand tonight, please, we will begin our meeting with a prayer led by a true old Baptist, I was going to say chair, you're not the chair. You're probably the chair, too. Dick Freeman, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Chief Sheriff Ryan.
Let's pray together tonight. God, we are thankful that as we look around us and see the changing of the seasons that we serve a God who never changes. But we are thankful for you and for who you are and for the blessings that you have given to us, but thankful for the blessing of salvation that you have given to us through your son Jesus, what we're thankful for tonight. I pray for our leaders that stand before me and are standing around me tonight. Pray, Lord, that you would give them wisdom from you tonight as they make decisions for our community, and you lift them up, and you encourage them, may you bless them, may you bless our town in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May the Senate. At this time, I would ask the council if they haven't already had an opportunity to take a look at the amendments, only asking for approval of the October 6th Greenwood City Council meeting along with the October 15th special call city council meeting, October 29th special call city council meeting.
Make a motion to the Secretary of Transit.
Thank you.
And a motion second.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Maker.
Yes.
Matt Kinslow.
Yes.
Ms. Reingartner.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you very much. Recognizations and acknowledgements tonight. We want to congratulate the Greenwood Bulldogs, they're doing all right this year. The 75th consecutive home win, so that's pretty amazing. Very, very cool for those guys, the team, that happened on senior night, so even more special. King Archer, as always, just keeps setting records. I don't even know what they all are now, but he's doing an amazing job along with the whole team. Also have a note, the Greenwood High School Band is going to state championships this Wednesday in Little Rock, and we wish them the best of luck. So, and I believe there was some really cool academic things happening, too, but I don't have a list of that. So, congratulations to all of our students, they do a wonderful job and make us proud. So with that, I'll move on, and we recognize guests tonight, thank you for being here. So, typically, when you come in like this, and we have you sing or dance or whatever it is you'd like to do, you guys get together and let me know. Okay. No, the guy on the end down there will deal with that any issue, I know. Anyway, thank you for being here tonight. Committee reports. If there's something missing in your pack that are on the tablet, let me know. Did we get everything in today?
Just, we just didn't get one from Waterway's.
Waterway's, okay.
I didn't get one from the senior citizens either. I didn't see one.
It is on your tablet.
Yeah, it should be on tablet.
And I think I emailed it to you.
Okay. Mr. John Bailey's here. Do you want to give a report by any chance with water sewer or not? I know you're not.
I was not really prepared to, but sure, I can give you a few highlights.
Okay.
My pass going, just going. Sewer's about finished, I think that's going to work out okay. Water, water's kind of going to, I think, some of the little bits and pieces to it. Tim totally thinks it's going to work out okay. I've done this type of work before overseas, where you did a lot of minor changes, and when you start putting things on, you get some surprises sometimes. So, we'll see whether we get a surprise when we start putting old lines off and new lines on. We could share you some reimbursement help, that's $1.6 million we were anticipating. 3.6 double cost states, figuring out just the hardware, too, so we're lower than 1.6, I think we would have called us 9.70, and that could help with rate things for next year, if we could get that money. That's all we got. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to do a few questions.
Yeah.
Are you going to be here for item number seven about the utility relocation ballot?
Sure. I'm at the extra five years.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, thank you. Citizen, citizen forum, we have the gentleman that was going to come tonight, but I think Hal Stur, if you know Hal, he's in the Deer Woods, so Jim's not going to make it tonight to talk to us about his question to you on steward property. I did want to report that I was pleased and honored to be over at the PD, what night was that, chief?
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday night. There was a promotional ceremony, and I just want to say, Chief Hobbs does an outstanding job of making that a very, very special night for those families, not only the officers, but the families that are involved. So, thank you for doing what you do with that, and I don't have first names, I forget, so I've got Ford.
Ford, Wiggly, and Dawson.
And Dawson, and two sergeants, and.
One sergeant, two.
I did it myself, so that's, I should know.
Too busy cracking jokes.
I was too busy cracking bad dad jokes, so. Great job on the event, I know the families appreciate it. All right, we'll move right into the financial report. Mr. Marsh.
Well, I'm going to get the microphone up here.
Oh, please. Well, we did that.
I know, change the channel. All right, hopefully this will work. Okay, the first thing is the results from the city sales and use tax. The revenues for the same period change, down 5.10%. So, we're down 5% from the previous October's collections or distribution to us. So, our cumulative growth from 25 over 24 for the 10 months is 3.95%, down, that's just a little bit of an increase from where our cumulative rate was last month. Our growth above the, or below the budget, we're down almost 7%, just slightly under 7% on the city sales and use tax side from the budget. 3.95% from being at our actually break even, we're down from previous year. The county sales and use tax revenues, they were actually up 6.61%. There's a little bit of a suggestion there, I'll get to it in a minute. That puts our cumulative growth from 25 over 24 at .17%, so that's actually moving in the correct, right direction. Most likely, it will put us at our budgeted 0% growth, but we should end up at the year right where our budget was on the county side. Advertising and promotion tax revenues were up for the same period, October over October a year ago, 29.68%. So, our cumulative AP tax growth was still down 2.24%. And you parlay that with the 4% growth that we anticipated, we're down 6.24% even with that 29.68. And I will suggest and tell you that a large percentage of this did not come necessarily from one month's great sale volume by the remitters, and actually it was some catch-up on a couple of our vendors that are paying, a couple of our remitters that are paying some previous month's payments to us. So, that's why that's abnormally high. As far as the city sales and use tax is concerned, here's the actual chart, it shows the city sales and use tax, actual little bit of an increase from 3.81 to 3.95, and there was a suggestion that that was probably due to the rebates, and we talked about that. So, I do want to show you first, this is a comparison about how the cities within Sebastian County did, and you'll notice that everybody showed gains in their city sales and use tax with the exception of Greenwood. We were down at 5.10. So, the suggestion there was, why did we, why did we have an adverse trend to everybody else? And that's because of this right here, this is the rebate. I told you that because we had the few periods where there was the remittance from the vendors that utilized the rebateable services and the products, they submitted through June twice. There was a little bit of a hiccup last year in both August and October. September is when we picked up the August rate, and I kind of figured we'd see another bump in the month of October, and it materialized at 9,604. That was pulled out of the amounts of distribution due to the rebate. So, that's why we were down the way we were. The audit basically picked up .72%, so that's not really a major impact, still way below 1% or even half a percent. So, we're not very concerned with the audit size, we are with this 5.09% pickup between that and the 2.14 of the previous year. All having to do with, most likely, can't say definitively, but we know, from the vendors that are suppliers to the bypass program. As far as the October distributions are concerned, these are the hard numbers that we were getting as far as distribution. October distribution was 382,024, it was 362 this year. Let's remove the noise from the rebates, because I would have get down to what the distribution would have been had there not been any impact from the rebate and audit. 397 in 2024, 372 in 2025. So, we would have actually been worse if there wasn't any for either of those years, we would have been down 6.20%. So, that's a decline in taxable sales, when you filter out the noise from the audits and the rebates, of $1.2 million for that August period of time, 25 over 24, realizing that August comes in a two-month lag. So, the distributions for the 10-month period for Greenwood, 2024 was, the distribution on a cash basis was 3,505 for the 10 months, it's 3,400 this year, which is 3.79% down, factor back in the impact of what the rebate and audit would have been, and you have collected tax before the adjustments of 3,600 in 2024 and 3,570 in 2025. So, we would, we, Greenwood, would still be realizing a negative trend in the sales, taxable sales in the city, this is city sales and use tax, 1.44%, taking about 2.6 million out of the taxable sales from 24 to 25. So, that's where the 1.4 comes from. So, while the rebates are having an impact, there still is a decline in the actual retail volume for this, from the city itself in Greenwood, to that extent. That is something you probably do want to watch, is this right here, because I'm factoring back in, or factoring out, depending on which way you look at it, the impact of the rebate and the audit, getting us back to what the taxable sales were. So, I go to the next one, it's the county's side, and the county side picked up 6.61 for October, and that put us into a very good position for the next two, to probably come in slightly below or maybe slightly ahead of that 2.6 million that we received throughout 24. Now, remember, the county picked up, we ended, we got this big pickup here because we share one, share one, share all, in the pot that's put in for the county sales taxes, distributed based on your census to total for the Sebastian County. So, we benefited from everybody else's robust sales in their areas, bottom line. The county sales tax is, by the way, used for your operations sides of all of the departments that are benefiting from county sales tax. Combined sales were, you'll see we're trending in the positive manner, 4.7 from June, 3.905, 2.59, 2.39. We're heading cumulatively in the right direction, primarily because of the county's tax structure and amounts that we're collecting. Advertising and promotion, I showed you the 29.68% to 2.24, but I do want to, I can go through these graphs, but you can see them there in your actual packet. I do want to get to this right here, this little schematic here, so historical trends from 2018 to 2025, January's, February's, March, all the way through the 10-month ending in October. Now, the numbers you see at the bottom are on that first slide I just showed you, that's where you come down to the 2.24% decline. But I want to pick up, just look at 2021 down to 2025. For 10 months, this was the sales tax volume, rather, the distribution, tax distribution from the 1% A&P. You see, we were at 12.42% in '21, drops to 9.04, to 5.86, to 3.98, to negative 2.7. So, while the volumes are there, they're trending negative. You can see how that, why I was concerned over the A&P side as well. There's got to be something new that's supposedly going to generate some more taxable dollars because the pot is shrinking of what's being distributed. Now, you can look at it two different ways, on the economic sense, from an economic perspective, and that is that while there's an inflation growth to people buying, paying more for a hamburger, or paying more for a piece of pizza, or whatever restaurant they're at, due to the rising costs, that will help because you're collecting that tax on the total sales. They charge you more for the hamburger, you're going to get more in that 1%. But diminishing returns says that eventually you're going to get charging so much that it's going to decline your sales volume. And when that happens, you're going to see these types of impacts here, where people stop eating out as much, because it's easier for them to cook it at home than it would be to go and pick up a fast food item. So, they're seeing that, the restaurants know this all too well. Okay, as far as the Greenwood's projection on the A&P, for the remaining two months of '24, we collected an average of 20,370 for each of the two months. The current 10-month average for 2025 is 18,286. In order for us to meet this budget projection of 236,000 for the year, we'd have to achieve 27,000 for each of the next two months distribution from the remitters. Well, last year, we only, for the last two months, collected 20, and we're only collecting 18 up till the next, last two months, I'm not seeing this happening, that's just my perspective, I'm sure you can see that, too. The average production needed to break even is 22,468. That's doable, but this number would have to be right here significantly higher. It would have to obtain this, we have to average about 20, 22.5 for each of the two months to just break even to our last year's collection. And then the cash flow, we started the year at 17,43. We had a lot of commitments and a lot of expenditures planned. The net decrease in cash for the month of October was 3,101 we spent. Some projects are getting completed, and they're coming in at the budgeted cost. They're not over budget necessarily in all aspects, most of that comes from water sewers work that they're doing on some improvements, as well as the road project. Year-to-date, net decrease in cash is 5,808, so our current all-in for the city funds 11,220, that is on your cash flow statements you do have on your tablets. The percent decrease for the fund balance in '25 so far is now 34.17%. This number, by the way, was budgeted to be significantly lower from water sewers committed months, but I'm more, I'm just giving you the overall high-level picture of where the funds are, not the individual breakout. As far as capital expenses concerned, this is what we just were talking about. The capital expense improvement budget for '25 year-to-date for all-in of the city was 15,800. We've spent 6,800 so far. Water is 4.1 of that, and that was a significant leap from the previous two months. So, they have now achieved 37.72% of their budgeted projects that they have going on. This number will increase some more, and I believe they may actually, and they've said challenge accepted, told them I would be happy if they reached 50%, because that means we're making significant progress on some of these projects that have been going on for multiple years. So, it's finally coming to fruition. As far as the general fund, general side is concerned, take out water sewer, all other departments budgeted at $5 million in capital, and they've spent 2.7 or 55.52%, so these make up this 43.3. So, there's significant progress being made, just good to see. And we have two items on the agenda for later, we'll talk about COVID coming up in our contingency funding on item 10.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions, comments? Moving on, so I was very pleased to see you guest, and then I skipped right over you, so my apologies to you. We'll go backwards here a little bit to the citizen. So, I've got Mr. John Miller signed up to speak, if you would come up, sir, and for the record, name, oh, we need a microphone.
I really don't need one.
I know you don't.
If you'd like 22.
Yeah, just so we get you on the record. Name and address.
Physical address?
Yes, sir.
Testing, testing. John Miller, 2318 Shady Drive. All right, we're right about four iron outside the city limits, and I'm going to stay over here. Good evening. First, I want to thank you for allowing me time to speak to you, audience as well. My name is John Miller, I am running for sheriff of Sebastian County. I've been with the Sheriff's Department almost 25 years. I actually started my career at the Greenwood Police Department in 1997, along with one of my captains, Darrell Meyer. So, we're having a reminisce tonight also. Joined the Sheriff's Department in 2001, worked various different divisions, worked my way up. In March, I was promoted to chief deputy. And one of the main questions people ask me is, where are you doing this? That's a simple question, I'm 50 years old. I still have kids to pay for, and I'm not done, not by any stretch of the imagination. I love my career, I love my department, I love my community, and we're going to take it to the next level if I have my way about it. I will not sit here and bore you to death and I'm some of these speakers can get, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you'd have, but I would appreciate your vote of march, sir. Thank you. Questions?
Appreciate you. The reason I wanted you to state your address, I didn't want you to get, be confused with the other John Millers.
I don't know these addresses. Well, if you notice, I'm on the west side, he's on the east side.
Yes, sir.
They wouldn't want us right next to each other, so thank you, I do appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate you being here, thank you. Okay, next on our list is Mr. Kendall Bean. There's no one named Kendall in that room, he'll give your name and address, too, sir, appreciate it.
Kendall Bean, 2257 Mount Harmony Road, Greenwood, just outside to Old Iron Greenwood City Lake. I'm also, want to introduce myself, so if you don't know me, somebody could doubt. My name's Kendall Bean, I am running and filed today for the first time ever from political office for Justice East District 2, which incorporates north of city all here, all the way where the house is in, and from here all the way east. So, the district is pretty good, pretty big, it also goes south, all the way down towards Mansfield. So, I have some city of Greenwood citizens in this area. I'm a retired, 30-year Sebastian County employee, a paramedic for 36 years, still got the license, went to a paramedic supervisor, went to Department of Emergency Management at Sebastian County under Judge Hudson, then went to EMS directive for a couple of years at the end. Just wanted to introduce myself, say hi, and if anybody has any questions, I feel free to. Answer.
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Good luck to both you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, where am I now? Agenda additions. We do have one that we discovered this morning in our department head meeting, it's a resolution to a way competitive bidding for wastewater, is that correctly stated?
It is.
Okay. Thank you. That would be number 11. Council, do you have any other which you'd like to add at this time? No, we will move on. We have no old unfinished business, so when we go to new business, number one is discussion of regional animal services facility. I'm removing that from, from, I'm just going to table it, I want to remove it, I think it's something we want to talk about in the future, near future, maybe, but I've got to get with the judge and some of the local communities. We briefly talked about it in meetings with Judge Hope, but I don't have anything to bring to you right now, so we'll just take that off. Number two, city attorney repeal replace ordinance 23-17, private club permitting.
Yes, Mayor. I believe it's letting them open their packets. So, this is basically verbatim exactly like ordinance 23-17 that you guys passed regarding private clubs. We're reviewing that in our codification committee because of new legislation that came down, and Mr. Michael's actually discovered that we had an error in here, we're only allowed to tax sale of alcohol at half the percent that the state enacts, which is 14% for spirits and mixed drinks, and 10% for beer and wine. We had ours at 14 and 10% as well, so if we had tried to collect that, we might have a problem, because we're only allowed to charge half of that. So, all this ordinance does is establish a section. It'll be section 18D is where it talks about that. So, you'll see the changes in there, 5% and 7% rather than 10% and 14%. So, that's what this ordinance is for, is to correct that mistake, 18-23-17.
I have a copy of the existing ordinance on your tablets, if you want to compare. Normally, we, and I forgot all about saying this in the codification committee, normally we take the existing one and abstract through so that the council sees what is there and what's taken out, what's added.
Sure.
So.
Questions, councilman?
And this is just for first reading, is that right? Or would you want emergency?
No, there's another emergency, I did not believe.
I was thinking there was something that was addressed at the, a change in, whatever, about them having to be a public or a nonprofit, yeah, public.
Yeah, so on that, Mr. Brown's going to mention that as well. Act 762, which went into effect on August 5th, changed it, changed that statute quite a bit, actually. For-profit entities are allowed now to be private clubs, which would include business entities, individuals, it pretty much opens that opportunity up for for-profit entities. Legislative intent was to promote economic development, particularly dry counties. And certain establishments that might not have qualified previously would now qualify, such as maybe a hotel or a large abandoned facility. So, that was, that was the change. Our old ordinance didn't really talk about any of that, though, but we discovered this other problem when we were reviewing it.
Any further questions or discussion?
I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance by title only.
Really? Second. Have a motion in a second.
Is it on first reading by title only?
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Maker. Ms. Kinslow.
Yes.
Ms. Reingartner.
Yes.
Ms. Adams. An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 23-17, establishing a permitting process and privileged permit for selling or dispensing any controlled beverage within a private club within the city of Greenwood by businesses licensed by the state as a private club to sell alcohol beverages. Levying permit fees and a city supplemental tax of 5% of beer wine and 7% of mixed drinks upon annual gross receipts which are derived therefrom. Repealing any ordinances in conflict therewith, establishing penalties for the violation of these provisions and for other purposes.
Thank you. Moving on, number, I can't read tonight. Number three, city clerk treasurer, confirmation of term renewals for the parks commission. Uh, number three, city clerk treasurer, confirmation of term renewals for the Parks Commission.
Yeah, just a couple of members are re-upping. They've agreed to serve another term on the Parks Commission. And that is Brandon Tate and Bobby Price. So we are asking the Parks Commission, uh, voted to keep them on, so we're just asking for confirmation as the ordinance states required.
I made that motion?
Second.
Motion's second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Mayor Kinslow?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Tenements.
Thank you. Number four is planning, uh, basically the same confirmation of term renewals for the planning commission.
And that's Brandon Camclini and John Overmark, both serving here on there.
Mr. Bell, you want?
Uh, just asking for the approval of the confirmation of the extension of their, uh, terms. Mr. said it's Brandon Camclini and John Overmark. They've heard their first term and would like to continue on.
Wait, a motion?
Second.
A motion in a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Mayor Kinslow?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Number five, the city attorney, resolution adopting citywide AI policy.
Uh, so what this is, this is another requirement by legislation that was passed in the last legislative session at state level, um, requiring all municipalities to adopt a, uh, policy for the use of artificial intelligence. Uh, this is basically modeled after, after, uh, guidance, um, sent down from the municipal, municipal league, excuse me. Um, so it's, it's pretty basic. Um, we went through this in committee and tried to tailor it to our needs at Greenwood. And so this is the result of that effort.
Travis, do you think, and I didn't mention this today, that, is this okay standalone, or do you recommend this be incorporated into our personnel policy handbook? What do you think?
I think if the council wanted to, they'd adopt it into the, the handbook.
Might be a good idea, huh? Seems like something that personnel, you know, it's, it's a, it's a.
I think it'd be good.
Probably that's what other cities are doing.
Yeah.
Or why.
HR. Yeah.
So I guess if, if the states, go ahead and state that, that they incorporate it into that and we'll make it happen.
Where, where it is to talk about what we talked about this morning, Travis, on the, uh, on the second day, I want you to approve that.
Be in section. Five.
So originally, I think it had the mayor approving this, and I was not too excited about that because I am not a guy that knows much about any of this, other than it's kind of scary. So I think it was important that we changed that to the city's IT committee, which being comprises of all directors, I believe, are correct. So it would just be one individual creating chief rise usage of AIs in the committee.
Also, on section ten, it still says the city administrator. We, I didn't have this referred to today. And so we might wanna change section ten A.
Ten A. I would just say mayor.
Okay, so line through that with the mayor, and then do we want in coordination with the IT committee, instead of department? Is that okay?
Uh, that's up to you guys. I thought y'all said there was an IT department we consulted with.
Actually, we don't have it as a department.
Okay, well, it could be that or the, uh, IT committee.
Have you guys talked with the companies that does our IT service about this?
They have not seen this particular.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of, a, uh, app and stuff that if you put that on there, everyone has access to it. Wait for you to read here.
Yeah, we discussed that in the deck today. This one is, Hunter, you wanna speak on this a little or not?
So can you?
Section six. So far, and I'm not, everybody's good at it, and Hunter's probably as good as any of us, or well, he's almost as good as I am. I don't even know how to spell it yet. Sean, that was a joke. So can you address what, what he's asking?
Yeah.
I know Travis can too.
We, we were looking at using, uh, business version or enterprise version of ChatGPT at the moment, which gives the administration the ability to lock down the entire software to, you can box it anywhere it can get out. Any data you put in doesn't leave. Uh, and it has pretty strict security protocols all the way around. And so going through our IT committee, which comprises of our IT services, uh, they would then have a say too in what we do and do not use, in what settings and constraints.
Yeah, I mentioned departmental, yes, they're, they're part of it, yeah, yeah.
So we do have a meeting with the IT committee, who is our contractor, DCR, is involved in that, and all the supervisors. We do have one scheduled for December fifth, I think it is. Um, so I mean, if you feel apprehensive about it, we could run it through that committee.
Well, if Walton School Business gave a AI workshop for us all day, and you're out there some very scaredy shit, it's, it's capable. And that was one of the things that they are going, so you gotta be careful with some of these platforms because, you know, that is out there for everybody.
It's the twenty-third of December, actually, it's pretty late, which, I'm not sure we're gonna bump that up for the three little persons, but.
ChatGPT is kind of the top of the market at the moment. I know they're, they're in business with the loans pretty heavily.
I will say that he was referring to that chat locking down enterprise or business version. It's twenty-five dollars per user per month, it's the biggest thing. So, I mean, it would be wonderful to have it, though, because Hunter's already using it personally, right? And I think he encountered the deal where he was using it on our behalf, but we need our own. He doesn't need to have to do that for us on his personal one base. Is that be correct?
That's correct.
Was that the plan to, uh, have him, uh, run for every employee or just the department head?
Yeah, it's gonna have to be budgeted in, I think.
We were gonna contact, uh, the company about their enterprise pricing. They, you have to contact sales to get that quote and compare the two prices and see which departments and how many employees within each department are interested. Apples to apples comparison.
I can't imagine every employee needing it with.
From my perspective, in my department, they're going to three people.
Yeah.
And those are the three people that actually have email addresses or have access to the city's network. I think that would be probably probably everybody except for the PD, either the department head maybe one or something like that, without we need it, so.
We could even look at having a department account. It was for the street department, and you have multiple users with a single sign-on that can access the one department's account. That may be a way to go around some of the extra expense.
Travis, I sent you AML's boilerplate template for AI. How much of that is in here? Do you know even?
Uh, it was very, very basic, so I would say most of it's in here. Cause I also looked at, um, can't remember what city it was now. There's another city or two that have passed them already. And I had those as well. Kind of didn't match up.
Yeah, so this is a reflection of all those?
Yeah, there were parts I liked and others.
Yes.
Some not so much. It's really kind of hard to put a policy on some of this, so new.
Uh, well, I'm thinking AI is gonna be with us from now on, as you know, and I liked your suggestion as far as, uh, into the personal, personal handbook or whatever policy handbook. I was wondering if that needs to be, does that need to be added into the title or somewhere?
Yes, it will be, have to be incorporated into, like, I'll do a section that says, or Travis can.
Well, I, I don't believe we have to have this done until the first of the year. Okay, so if you guys wanna, you know, mark this up a little bit or bolster some parts of it, or whatever you guys wanna do with it, uh, we'll take it back to committee and have it back next month.
Would you like to table it until next month? If you would make.
I'll make a note for the table.
Second. Motion's second to table. Thank you, Hunter.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
And now Mayor Kinslow is not having to make the form anymore because we're on Powell under the ring at seven-thirty-eight, so, Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, number six is fire authorization to contract for life safety detonation project. Chief?
Mayor, Mr. Stare, Councilor, Council. We have to ask for permission to, for the mayor to go into contract. This is for a life safety system, station one. Uh, seal bids came in on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, ten AM. Uh, the lowest bid, uh, was by DSC Fire, one sixty-eight oh five. The market came in at one sixty-four, five seventy-nine, but the lower two is bid, uh, we both hit one sixty-three, so glad that one of them came in under that. So it is under what we have, uh, budgeted, and I would ask you to, to let the mayor proceed with, uh, uh, going into contract.
How much was that bid?
One sixty-eight oh five.
You have it in your packet, actually, isn't it? That'll be cheap.
They're both with that three thousand dollar each.
Make a motion, we allow the mayor in there into the contract?
Second.
Motion's second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Number seven, wastewater resolution and then budget for utility relocation valve.
Um, the Water and Wastewater Committee looked over this and sent it to y'all for approval. But, uh, on the bypass, we have a twelve and sixteen-inch force main coming from the main lift station to the wastewater plant. We cannot cut over the new section of the sixteen-inch unless we put a valve in. And that was not foreseen until just this past few weeks. So there's only, the only way you can do that without having sanitary sewer overflow is call an insertion valve where they can put it in live line. And there's only two companies that even make it for that size, and we're pursuing one of them that's the least expensive at thirty-seven thousand dollars. But we ask, are we, it was recommended we put up to sixty because that company, we've gotta flesh the details out with them to make sure they understand where it's at and they can do it. And the other estimate we got from a local contractor was fifty-eight thousand. But that, he came to the site, saw everything he would have to do, and that's kind of a turnkey, but we're gonna try to do it for the thirty-seven thousand. So we need, we need y'all to amend the budget so we can pursue that because time is of the essence because they cannot cut this line over and move forward with the rest of the, you know, that project until that's done. So it was, we, I didn't have enough in my normal budget, and it was unforeseen. Do you have any questions on that? That's kind of, but the Water and Wastewater Committee.
Well, I guess later here, is that a conjunction with the, with the other one that's, is going on too?
I'm sorry.
The addition?
Well, uh, the, yeah, and so today, after Charlotte wasn't at that committee meeting, and we didn't realize we'd need an emergency clause, right? To not have to bid it out?
Uh, a waiver.
A waiver, and so that's what, it is in connection with that. We just realized today we're gonna need that as well. Amendment of the budget and a waiver.
We're just, uh, covering our tracks on that because there may be a statute that, when something is time-sensitive like this with utilities, water, and sewer, we may not need it, but we'll, we'll be safe if there's a problem with it.
I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution, meaning the budget.
Second.
A motion and second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Number eleven is the resolution to waive competitive bidding.
Like I said, um, it is time is of the essence, and there's only two companies that might be just top of valve. And so we're kind of limited, and time is of the essence.
And, uh, I guess, you know, we're saying that that, that kind of helps you isolate one pot, uh, or, or the other one?
Yeah, well, if we cut into this pot without any kind of valve, we're gonna have sanitary sewer overflow. And I mean, we tried to look at how we could pump it away from there. We really, where it's located, we really can't. They've cut that line before at a higher elevation, and there wasn't any backflow, but where it's at, if we cut into it without a valve to shut off the flow, we're gonna have sewer on the ground, and I'm supposed to keep sewer off the ground, so.
We moved eleven up, correct?
Yes, yeah, we're on that.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution, we're gonna debate a bidding on emergency utility location.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Mr. Kex, where is that?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Um, well, you know, the bypass, where the bypass is, they put those two encasements under. So the new lines are under there, but now they've gotta tie into the old lines. And where we're gonna put the valve is closer to the wastewater plant where there is a valve on the twelve inch, but there's not on the sixteen, and so it'll help us now and in the future because we ever have problems with that line, we have no really way to shut it down. And, you know, we can put, uh, put it over with the other line, but the backflow, there's just no way to shut it down. So it's definitely a capital improvement.
Okay.
But it's needed right now.
So it's gonna be on the south side of that?
Uh, no, on the east, you know, uh, here's the plant, here's north. Be very close to the plant, uh, just on the other side of the plant, about three hundred feet from the ponds, on, on the other side of the trees. So it is out in the field, and that's why this first company, we, we wanna make sure they understand it's not right off the road. They're gonna have to go out into a field, and, but that's where it's gonna be the best location for it.
How old is that line?
Pretty old.
Is this a sixteen inch?
Yeah.
I think that was put in when they put that new lift station in.
Oh, four?
Something like that, fifteen years ago.
The engineer.
My first year of council.
Yeah. The engineer thought when we had done the upgrades to the lift station that we had cut that line, but we did closer to the lift. You know, there wasn't gonna be a backflow issue, but where it's at, and we, and we, we have to put it past, you know, where it won't backflow from the plant. So it has to be from where the new line is and plant. There's only just a, but otherwise it won't help us. Cause we can shut it down at the lift station, but we can't stop backflow from the wastewater plant. It's connected to a twenty-four inch that's also connected to the twelve, and you can't shut down the twenty-four, so.
And I was just asking on the age, cause that is an engineered project. That was engineered by Randy Coleman.
Nobody can believe there's not a way to shut that down.
I know, and just in the future, it would, if I looked at it, I wouldn't catch it, but if y'all could look at it with the mindset of proper planning, cause it's expensive to go back and do things like this.
Yeah, and I mean, that was the first thing, how we, hey, if we need to shut this down, how are we gonna do it? And so we started really looking at it, and we thought, well, if we do that, we're gonna have to, we just, there's only ways we're really with the valve.
It goes off for it, as in Gary Campbell's administration and, uh, Coleman, Nick Wagner, Coleman, again.
I always, I like, I needed to ask where, how close it was to the plant because it always takes me back to your predecessor, Greg Cross, who, who doesn't love Greg Cross? But Greg told me one time, when we got this going, and he said, you know, mayor, that's not, that's not gonna happen in our lifetime. And the next day, our officer's taking flags right in front of his building. He goes, well, I guess it is, so.
Right, other methods beside a valve are gonna cost way more. I mean, there's just, and really, you couldn't figure it out without putting a valve, so. This is an insertion valve that's done live. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think we need to vote. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, Parks, uh, inclusive playground fund.
Our inclusive playground project is fully funded. Uh, we have, as Parks Department committed two-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars. And between the Parks Department and our local new nonprofit that was created with basically moms in the community, um, they've raised almost five-hundred thousand dollars for the project. Takes us a couple of years, but we made it. We've got one last hurdle that we have to jump over. Farmers Bank has committed a hundred thousand dollars to us, but they do it ten thousand dollars a year. I'm not quite liquid enough in the Parks Department, probably up a hundred thousand dollars. So I was hoping that the general fund might be able to be put forth a hundred thousand dollars to be paid back in over ten-year time.
Or could, general funds are kind of tight. Could you borrow from Farmers Bank? A hundred thousand dollars?
I'm sure you'd love that.
Have, have the interest on it.
Thank you.
Where would we add on general, I mean, where would we get this on a general fund?
General fund? Just lower it. Just lower it.
He's gone out of his area and now it's into our area.
I don't have general budget yet, but this year, general's budget is solid enough to be able to do that, but you're spending future monies. One of the things I mentioned in our budget study session was on deficit spending. It says, short municipalities generally cannot spend funds they don't have, but also they can't promise future funds that they don't currently have yet received. And that's what you're basically doing. You're asking for the fact that you're banking on the fact that the bank is going to follow through that commitment over ten years. And something doesn't happen to the bank in that time, and then it falls back on your default, if you will, to the city on a commitment that they didn't follow through. That's what you're risking right now. You're going to get the money back, it's just going to be a ten year pretty much loan. I would not recommend you, you do it that way. If Farmers pays their first payment right now, there are other options that can, that can be, what's that, is any side bargains?
Side bargains.
Side bargain.
The carry walkers.
That means twenty thousand of it would already be received now. So you would be only going to have eighty thousand in the future, ninety thousand in the future years. But they also have a hundred and fifteen thousand that's remaining residual amount that was overfunded for the splash pad when all was said and done. We now know that there is one final billing coming in for about seventy, which would leave about forty-five thousand somewhere in there left. That could be used to be reallocated or redeployed to this as well. So that would lower the amount of money that you would have to commit to as far as the funding is concerned. It wouldn't be as impactful, if you will, but that money would go. And I believe this is really only a phase of the project, right? It's not the entire thing.
It's the entire thing for now.
For now.
This could be, this could be the...
Say where I was going with that.
It could be phase one for now.
If they, if they donated a hundred thousand committed that, and yet they need the hundred thousand now, and were able to fund it with these other resources awaiting their full commitment, any monies that is received beyond what has been funded would go towards the future project, as long as it goes to the project. So, I mean, that's another way of looking at it. The money is welcome. We appreciate everything they're doing. That's not the issue. The issue is how do we make it happen and stay cash flow solid.
I also have a question. Is, on the legal side of things, while we do love and appreciate this generous donation by Farmers Bank, would we need a letter of intent or any document like that from them? Would we, would that be, as a thing to do?
That's already, that's already planned.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, that's already planned. The, the only sense of urgency in this is that it's five hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment. There's, there's a mandatory price increase with playground folks by December.
So what we'd be doing is spending money on next year's budget, right?
Yes.
So we're in budget season. So where do we go from here, Tom? You know what? I mean, you know, we all want to see this happen.
I'm not the advisor on that. I can just tell you. I mean, I'm a bad dad either way. I'm, I'm in a no win situation. So.
What's the best way to work, how's that?
Do you think a loan, or do you think like fifty thousand, like forty-five thousand you mentioned, and then?
How much is the increase for next year? Three percent? Three percent over five hundred thousand?
Okay, if they, you can do it this way. They have their city sales and use tax. That hundred and fifteen thousand would have gone back there, absent of seventy. So they'll be dumping probably about forty-five in there by the end of the year. So that, along with the first payment that they would, Farmers Bank be giving, they could commit it and they could fund back to the city sales and use tax fund, the amount of money that was used. But I don't know about the loaning money. It's probably going to be operational money.
Can also, I'll also have some AMP money that.
Also have AMP money that will go into that.
Some of that capital that I've been spending here.
So, I mean, my recommendation would be that they, they would, they're leaning, if they need any other monies, then they would obviously have to come back to you for something outside of this project. And then you would approve it at a future date instead of telling you hands to tie. That's why I wrote in here up to a hundred thousand dollars, because I'm not sure you're going to need to fund that all of that. It is a park project. It is a city amenity for the citizens here, something very good. As you know, the moms raised quite a bit of money on, on behalf of the project.
And you, can you not break up the purchase into parks, like say, do half of it now, or whatever, half of it next year, or whatever you have, you know, available for this year, and then do the rest?
This is phase, this is phase one. So essentially, this is half of it. This is half of the park.
Well, even then, Tom, I'm saying, you still make the purchase of, you know, three hundred thousand this year, and then move over and take two hundred thousand, you know, in twenty-six or whatever.
From the equipment perspective?
Yeah, from the equipment perspective.
It wouldn't change the, the ten year, it wouldn't change the ten year?
Well, it wouldn't change the ten year, but I mean, you know, you're saying, I mean, the urgency is because of the price increase, the three percent price increase. And so I'm saying, you know, if it's, that minimizes the three percent price increase. So I'm saying, well, we're going to do what we can this year. You know, like I said, Tom, you might not be, you know, might be able to get, I mean, how does, you have, so you have four hundred thousand right now?
Just shy of five hundred.
Just shy of five hundred.
But that's.
But that includes the Farmers' hundred.
So theoretically, it's not still funded. It'll be fully funded in ten years.
Right. But you have four hundred thousand right now, or just shy of?
Four hundred right now.
Does the park committee, commission budget?
Sir?
Does the park committee budget?
Have they passed it?
Yep.
Absolutely. It's been in our budget for two years now.
They don't know about this. They have us like voted on this.
They do know about this. We talked about it last meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I was looking at, trying to spend the four hundred thousand this year to look at, you know, how we can, you know, add on to the rest of it, you know, the following year or whatever. I mean, you'd have, to me, four fifths of the equipment to be, because there, that doesn't include the labor costs or whatever getting all that there, right?
Five hundred thousand is all in.
It's all in?
So, Tom, you wrote this?
Did I?
I was on the phone. I have to write that.
You why?
I wrote that because it was requested to be written on history.
Okay, true, true. Okay. So, you know, I love this fact that they've raised almost five hundred thousand dollars and they just need a little bit of help from us. That's great. Make sure money go a long way. Kind of like a grant or something. So if we, if we adopt this resolution, some of these details will have to be figured out during budget.
Correct. It's a give and take.
So.
Something's going to probably have to be given up on the unrestricted general fund sum. Yes.
So, I mean, I'm for it. I just don't, we know we're at this period in time where we keep talking about city sales and use tax. What if there's no city sales and use tax at the end of next year?
Right.
That, that, and of course, and then we've kind of got this bit of a debt we just incurred. Boy, the city of Greenwood in charge is a bad place to be at that moment. And you were showing us some doomsday stuff last, last time. And, which has been giving me nightmares all month. So.
Can I say, this, this is, for some reason, it's not on record. Like, if you were looking at the minutes for Parks Commission, they have not voted on this.
I talked about it in my director's report last meeting.
Yeah, they, it's not listed in that either. You know, I listed those out.
You just pointed those out.
Said ninety-eight percent funded, though. That is in.
I did say that.
But I'm just saying specifically.
All you did, all you did with my director's report was, report was full, just points out, you were specific on this.
That's fine. I'm just saying, the Parks Commission has not voted on this. I just want that record to show.
They haven't voted, but they are aware. They understand that we need a hundred thousand dollars from Farmers Bank over ten years. That was explained in the detail in our last meeting.
Definitely. It's not like this. This is the first I've seen it. And I was there at the last meeting. So I'm just saying.
How bold of a recording, Tom.
I, I would make a motion to adopt the resolution pending Parks Commission approval on this resolution.
Yeah, that's, and that's exactly what I would want to.
So I, I know, because they're in charge.
Absolutely.
They, they, I mean, this additional help they need has come over in our area. But that's, that's my motion. I make a motion to adopt the resolution pending Parks Commission approval.
I'll say that. Well, I'd really like to see, again, kind of a breakdown. I mean, what equipment would you be foregoing? You know, since like you said, you have four hundred thousand. I mean, that's, you know, eighty percent of the, of the project. You know, I mean, what equipment that you could, you know, kind of push off and add to, you know, the next year, the year after, and still complement, you know, what you're doing, you know, with the four hundred thousand and that all installed?
This is the push off version of the park.
The what now?
This is the push off version of the park.
Right.
This is the version of the park with the extra, with the extra parts pushed over, like you just said. This is the half, this is half of the original park that we have.
Right. But I mean, there's components of the, of the thing, right? I mean, it's just not all one big fabricated.
Right. One big place structure and some swing sets.
I'd like to see the, the Parks Commission discuss this. But in the meantime, I'd also want to make like the forty-five thousand dollars, I'd like to think about other places other than the general fund, if I might be able to get that money.
Let me make one other statement. That, that, not the profit group that's raising monies, that's not going to stop just because this, they're going to continue to raise monies. So they're, depending on how aggressive they get over the next couple of years, they're may, they may, you might be funded quick.
I was thinking, along your lines, I was thinking about the momentum. There seems to be some momentum at this, at this moment in time. Now Farmers Bank's jumped in, and I hate to be the guy that just throws in the monkey wrench and stops that momentum. You know, it can kind of be pushed on forward.
Right. Which is where he was putting me a minute ago.
What's the cost of the playground equipment itself?
I mean, that's what the three percent, that's what the three percent were.
Yeah, kind of take a look.
Yeah.
There is momentum, Mr. Powell, for sure. And, like you said, so these, these ladies have raised over a half million dollars in the middle, Casey received the anonymous gift from, I think he's calling it First Baptist Church, for ten thousand, or, sorry, I remember it, or remember up in church for ten thousand in the other day. So the more this gets out there, people are acknowledging.
And I've seen them, they're always at the AMP commission because we kind of made a policy to let them, they have the leftovers.
Yeah.
So they're always scraping for the leftovers.
And as I don't have, Danielle, I, you know, I have ready for Mr. Marsh's general budget or close. So I can't say there's X amount of dollars ready for that, but there should be. I mean, I don't think it's going to.
The equipment itself is around two hundred thousand dollars.
So we get the money for that now?
Absolutely.
I mean, we'll push it on the show, we can purchase the equipment, we'll figure the December date to save ourselves that three percent.
It's just a matter of paying for the project as a whole.
Right. And when do you plan on starting the project?
Soon as the Easter on the budget.
So you're going to start in December?
January third first.
I think, yeah, I mean, kudos for, you know, the progress you have made so far and stuff. But I, I just think that, you know, if there's an urgency, that the urgency should be, we do what we can, you know. You possibly spend the four hundred thousand that you've got. And I think that would definitely, to me, make a, a big push to, to show everybody, hey, this is, you know, this is what we're doing. Look what we accomplished so far. And I think that would, just like you said, it caused, you know, y'all saw the momentum going, you know, Farmers Bank stepped up, you know, and you might cause, you know, once people see actually stuff being done, you know, cause others to step up and stuff. But I think, you know, instead, the, it's great that y'all have done what y'all have done, you know. And I'm just saying, kind of in the spirit of just, yeah, budget constraints, constraints on our part, you know, that, say, I would just say, you know, give yourself a big pat on the back and let's go forward with, with money at hand. And start with that.
Might get yourself in a position like the city of Fort Smith, where you own a bunch of slides and you can't put them up. Now, we were kind of in, in a spot like this, back in the original park, we had enough money to buy the playground equipment. So we bought the playground equipment. And then my company, Mike McAllister's company, and Mark Young's company, we put up all the dirt that was fly by Michael Johnson, Floyd Brown, you know, they don't like each other. Johnny Smith and, I think Eric Goodwin. And there was a bunch of guys out there hauling. And I know that Johnson Construction went out there and used their roller and packed it. But all that was done in a week, and we all did it for free to get the parks system off the ground. And there is a picture that we have out there. So we're all out there smiling and tired.
We could, we could reenact that. There you go.
I'm still tired.
So what's the, what's the wishes of council?
Well, we have nothing to say on that. Then the Parks Commission approval. And that means a vote, right, on the Parks Commission.
Well, I would just like to delay until we have a vote on the Park Commission for a really kind of committee thing.
We have a motion.
We have a motion is second to pass it.
Okay.
With that.
I mean, is there more discussion or?
Yeah. If you want to discuss more, that's fine. I know where you're coming from.
All right, I vote no.
Okay. Mr. Maker?
No.
Mr. Ryan Lard?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
It fails for lack of majority.
Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Yeah.
Casey, you think you can come back next month with it? You know, with a approval from Parks and stuff?
No, the other time.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. The price increases in December?
Okay. Moving on, number nine is finance discussion on the cost of living. Tom.
Okay, the national COLA came in at two point eight percent. That's the cost of living increase that was instituted. We just got the word of that at the end of October. Living costs in Arkansas is eleven percent lower than the United States national average. So that would put the Arkansas COLA at two point five. Fort Smith COLA is thirteen percent lower than the national average. So that puts them at two point four. And Greenwood, one point four. And Greenwood is at thirteen point three lower than the national average, which puts us at two point four three, if you were looking at Greenwood. When you look at your workforce and where people are living that work in the city of Greenwood, a lot of them don't work, don't live in the city of Greenwood. They live, some in Oklahoma, some in Fort Smith, some in Vacca, some in various places other than in the city of Greenwood. And historically, you've been using the Arkansas COLA. I'm just giving you the numbers here, and I will show you the financial impact right now. So the national rate at two point eight with our current wage that we have, our total wages, is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five sixty-three. That is just a wage impact, not the M related. So there are other things that will be impacted. That's just solely two point eight percent of our current salaries, wages. Arkansas rate of two point five is a hundred and thirteen thousand eight ninety-six impact to the budget. Fort Smith would be, I mean, counting that as one hundred and eleven, that's not really relative. And Greenwood would be a hundred and ten thousand seven oh seven. So it's a three thousand dollar difference between Greenwood and Arkansas's rate. That would be in the Arkansas rate, whether it would be to make the. That would be in the Arkansas rate, whether it would be to make the employees whole based on the rate of inflation. I also gave you the numbers for what it would be scaled down in quarter increments down to one percent. So you can just see what those numbers are and what it does. This number between the one-ten and one-thirteen, as I mentioned, was, is really immaterial as far as the overall impact from just the wage perspective. As far as the way it's budgeted, I want you to see on this bottom slide, from 2021 to 2026, when we first started doing COLAs, one point three, five nine, six, seven, four, two ninety, two thirty, and now this would be estimated to be at two fifty. Right now, we are putting in the two eighty, two dollars and eighty cents, the national, or two, two point eight percent. Two point eight percent has been inputted into the budget, so it will move the max on the actual salary scales. So that is already inputted there. Now, that doesn't have any impact in what's actually paid out. That's just so it creates the room based on inflation for your max range for the salary scale. And that is by your design. The only thing that hasn't been input is what you are considering for budget purposes for the COLA for the upcoming year. And that is something that would be distributed to all employees within the city. And one retiree, two, one retiree. Elect official retiree.
Two.
And then there's still a lot of. Well, only one gets the COLA though, I think.
Yeah.
Well, well.
How does that work out then?
Yes. So one of the things to consider is that the general and admin number is virtually, based on changes that happened in 2026, that number has, it's really the 2025's budget number with 2025's changes to it that we've incurred. That's because I haven't received the, what the real numbers were going to be. And right now, everybody else is in there as well, with the exception of, did you do a, street, do a long sum for incentives?
I did, no.
You haven't, you didn't put it on?
All I did was put two point five percent COLA.
Okay, so what we have, well, I took it out.
Oh, that's fine.
Because no one has a COLA in it. They have to decide that. But as far as the water sewer is concerned, their number, they do have a placeholder for merits. That is in these, oh, come on, it's in these numbers right here. So the water and sewer numbers that are in there for salaries does include a long sum budget number that they've been distributing. They're the only ones that have that in it. Everybody else is void of any merits. That's a live look, with the exception of general and admin currently.
Well, I like the, the Fort Smith COLA, you know, just in the spirit of kind of where we are with the budget and things are, you know, I, it's not much of an increase over last year's two point three, but, you know, it's a, it's something of an increase, increase, but it's still something I think that we can handle by the, the budget process.
We've been doing the Arkansas rate several years now. I mean, that may as immaterial to Fort Smith and the park that operate. I would just say, it's like consistency. Do we just study the Arkansas rate?
How do you calculate Greenwood's? I don't calculate, and it's calculated for me. There's a, there's a publication out there that shows what the cost of living is comparatively with, between cities.
So is it something that you want them to vote on or?
You don't have to. You just give me some guidance to put into the budget. Eventually, it will ferret out in the actual budget results when you do your study sessions. But what I'm looking for is guidance as to what to plug in. And I just wanted to show you what the impact would be right now, putting that into the actual budgets. Because right now, none of the budgets have a COLA in them.
So, but you said you were using the two point eight percent.
Two point eight is just to move the max in the range.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't actually impact what you're paying.
Right.
You have to tell me what number to put in to pay them, because you can give them two point eight if you want, or you can give them anything less. That's your priority.
Tom, didn't, didn't that do the state COLA, move those ranges by the state last year instead of on the national?
Always the national.
They used the national?
Yeah, and then, and then they've been giving us, like Ralph said, the state.
Yeah.
Because we always get all confused.
Yeah, it was supposed to be the national, but for some reason, I'm thinking they lowered it.
The two different ones, when, when it would be easier for you to stuck with one or both in the matrix and our COLA.
So, but gosh, I hate to admit it, I think Ralph makes sense in being just for consistency. I would go with two point five.
Can you say that again?
I'll go with two point five. I think for a placeholder right now, and then when we dive into budgets, we can discuss if that is good. And I think two point five right now would be appropriate.
Well, I have a tendency to agree with them, but I was wondering, as we're going through the budget, can we just not plug in raises as, as we go? Let's just go in on individual budgets, determine needs and wants, and get rid of wants, and at the end, go in and look deeper at merit raises and COLAs to exactly what we can do. Or do you need to do that? You need to plug that in as we go?
I'd do it however it's going to happen.
I would rather all raises, all the conversation in COLA and merit raises be at the very end. And let's go through and get all of our needs out of there. And then it might be that, you know, that quarter of a percent might make a difference in somebody being able to get something they're needing very bad in a state. So that's just my opinion. I've always thought that, though. For twenty years, I wished the raises were moved to the end because it's always benefited every time, you know, certain water comes up, you know, the, the magic of certain water, the commissions want to give a raise, and then the street department's not getting a raise. And it seems like most of our time is wrapped up in these raises. So I, I would like to see it moved to the end, but we had never done it, but I've always wished we would. I would like to see it moved to the end of the budgeting process.
I think that's a good idea, and I've made my comments today in the department meeting and for whatever it's worth. I realize there's commissions. I'm going to have a hard time, and I fight for raises every year. Employees know that. COLA, merit, anything we can get to. I always think the COLA should be automatic, in my, in my opinion, because it's what I like to call milk money or catching up money or keeping up money. So I think that should be, and I know it's your, your choice, Steve. You don't have to give a COLA. In fact, we went a few years without COLA or merit, but, and I appreciate the circumstances that that took place in. But I will say this out loud, because I didn't want to say it just in the department head. I want, my opinion of presenting you a budget this year, if indeed you're willing to, at the end of the day, if you're willing to consider the merit and COLA, good for our employees, because that's, that's, if you don't run the city without our employees, and I don't get into a big, long political speech, but you all are aware of that. But again, I know how this works, but also hoping to have a hard time with any department receiving merit raises without the whole city receiving merit raises. That is a, that is a killer of morale to, to no end. So, and I, and I said this this morning, and I'll say it now too. I understand, I understand that water sewer, for instance, make money, but we're in this, we're all in this together. And so that's my two cents on that. We'll talk about it later at the end of the day, budget times. So I can, I can look at Jeff Guy's and say, hey, if you want to work for the water sewer, go apply. If that's something you can go for. But that's just my personal opinion about some departments getting merit and some not. You know, that's hard to deal with on your, on your employees.
Well, I concur with them, merit and raw, that I mean, just wait and put those, the COLAs and the.
I really want you to say that.
Yes, I concur, merit and raw. No, this, wait to begin, because I think it's really, especially in, just like all this year, we've just been facing a, you know, a kind of a budget crunch. And just see how it all falls out with the needs of the city. And, you know, I know, yes, you know, COLAs and raises are our needs as well, you know, but we really should factor those in after we see the bottom line.
Would you be okay with Tom maybe not plugging in, but at least having the thought of if you were to give a consider COLA, it would be two fifty? Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
That's fair. Arkansas COLA.
Not a vote, just Arkansas.
Just so you can see that number at all.
Yeah.
Right.
Also, on the salary matrix, is it okay for us to go ahead and redo it with the two point eight, you know? Okay.
I thought that was automatic.
No, I think we have to do it.
It's automatic.
It's automatic.
Sure, sure.
Like, I do want to give you a little bit more, heart, and just something to think about all of the, you know. The average merit increases that have happened over this time, at least from twenty-three on, some departments higher, some departments lower, you know, is four and a half to five percent. That's the merit side from the salary perspective. So that would be basically equating to our current budgeted amount of wages to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for merits. And then you look, if, if past history holds true, then you look at the COLA, that's a hundred and thirteen thousand. That would be an impact right there from both, meaning issued of three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars on, on the wage side.
That's merit for all employees?
That's merit for all employees. That's all departments, all employees average.
What was that first, the second number, I'm sorry, one thirteen?
That's the kind of impact.
What's the merit?
That's not the merit. That's just COLA.
What is?
The merit is two hundred and fifty thousand, right, we're rounding it. So it's about three hundred and fifty-three thousand. So no merits would mean you save a quarter of a million dollars.
Those numbers, I still, it would be nice to review that at the very end. And it comes down to having to adjust merit raises and paying the utility bills. The utility bills are all went out. And we're going to approve the utility bills as we quickly go through the budget. This is what we have to approve, and then we can have that, even now, it's turned into a long discussion. Instead of every department having this discussion, let's just do it all at the end. All raises, and I think COLA is going to be an automatic. You know, I mean, you know, it costs a living, and we want people to at least make, be making next year what they were making this year, or my dollar go just as far. But still, I think all that should be held at the end. But that's just me.
I was looking not for a vote. I was looking just to know what I'm going to put in on my list.
Because he has to put it in so many different places and such. That's a lot of.
Okay, good. Go on to number ten. Mr. Marsh, again, discussion on contingency, pardon.
All right. So we, we talked about for years, the fact that we had no actual planned document or ordinance that establishes what our reserve was going to be for our contingency funding. So it came to light when the municipal league sent out a, kind of an advisory, based on what happened up in Rogers, and we've mentioned this at the budget meeting, the tornado that came through, really, luckily, they had enough money to cover some of the events that occurred that was very costly to the city to have to repair and maintain and upkeep as far as the damage that was done through their town. So AML basically said, here's a guideline, gave us two examples, one being Little Rock and one being Rogers, as far as their ordinance is concerned. We would have to modify it, obviously, for the revenue streams that we have and our expenses that we have per each department. However, if you looked at water sewer collectively, water individually, sewer individually, and then street in general, general's made up of the general and admin department, fire department, police, animal services, parks, and plant, primarily, all flowing through the unrestricted or the restricted being CSUT, fire, and parks, as far as their main expenses are, are concerned, and where the contingency would have an impact if there was an event. So in looking at what I kept saying from the previous five years, I guess it's been in my presentations, that I really was not comfortable dropping the general unrestricted fund below a million dollars. And now I'm showing you why it's a million dollars. First, there's two ways you can look at it. One was the recommendation that you have your total budgeted expense for the upcoming year, and you take the monthly average times two months. And that would be what you budget for your contingency. So down here on the bottom, if you looked at the general fund with all those departments, and I put twenty-five here for general and admin, because that is the current budget, and we're going to just use that for illustration purposes, that would be an annual budgeted expense for all six of these departments. That's seven million dollars, five hundred and eighty-three per month. Two months is one point one million. Now you see where the million comes from. So when you look at the fifteen percent, that's the other option. You take a percentage of your annual budget. And in this case, this would be a percentage of the seven million, which means it would be one million, fifty thousand. I would recommend the contingency at a percentage-based level at one point one, just to round it up. And the annual budget for the expenses, realizing that general and admins isn't solidified yet, that would be at about one point two five million on the two-month average. So that's where this one million comes from on the general side, just to keep it using ballpark round numbers. So we're looking at a total budgeted expense just for these main departments, this encompassing six departments, twenty-five million dollars. Fifteen percent would be three million eight. We're looking, I'm looking at probably recommending a quarter and a half million. Most of that's coming from the water sewer at two point five. And that's because that's a larger, I mean, one little event for the water and sewer and a, and a plant or several lift station issues, you're looking at very, very costly repairs. So contingency fund for them, they're already building. They built it into their rate increase that they had, because they had no planned contingency fund method. So that is in their five-year rate studies, and it's already being collected. At the end of the year, the money that they're collecting, and it looks like it will be about a million, will be shifted off and parsed out to depreciation, replacement reserve, or funded depreciation. And the other side would go to a contingency fund. So they're, they're in good shape as far as their own house is concerned, because they have a way of incorporating that revenue stream into their rates and be there in case that money is needed for some kind of an emergency that's not covered by, fully covered or sustained by insurance. As far as the street department is concerned, even though it looks like five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, we all know that one road can cost a million dollars. And so I would not go below a million on the street department as my recommendation. And general would be the, I've already given you that. The other thing would be, this fifteen percent is something you guys set. The city councils would set in that ordinance. You could make it, set it at twenty percent. I've seen cities at twenty percent, seen cities at twenty-five percent and fifteen percent. Well, you have to look at what's your need and what's your risk. Obviously, a city that has greater land mass to it and a lot more citizens in it would need a little bit more in contingency build and funding. Now, twenty percent would mean that I would be looking at maybe five point seven million dollars in contingency funds parsed out in that manner. If that were the case, now we have to look at, okay, we see how you build it, now we got to see how you collect it and then fund it. And how long are you looking at funding that? So water sewer's looking at funding it over a five-year period. If we were to do that, we'd have to look at, do we establish a percentage each year in the budget to say, pay yourself first? And I've made that comment several times. Pay yourself first is put that money away and earmark it for contingencies. And a contingency isn't, I, I really would like to have this, or I really would want to have that. There's a, contingency is not something I would recommend in your ordinance be dispensable by the actual departments themselves. That should be something that, because it's a city ordinance, that the city council has the oversight to dole out the monies once it's collected. the oversight to dole out the monies once it's collected and put into a restricted fund for your contingencies. You decide based on how you define the contingency, and you do dole out the money. But then as the money's doled out, as you know, the ordinance would then have to obviously be written in a way that dictates the refunding it back. So as the monies come out, that department has the responsibility to refund it up to what their level, it could be the levels here, their level of contribution to that contingency fund, or if they go over that level that's been put into that contingency fund to the amount that was dispersed to them in a pool. So this is just for discussion, because I'm in the process of preparing a sample ordinance for you to kind of look over and go all over and do. Uh, I think by next year, we should start this ball rolling and see how that.
With the other cities, I mean, how much of the timeframe do they get, do they get themselves, you know, to overcome, do this in a five-year period, get to this level, or, you know, or?
It varies, because there's a big disparity between Little Rock, which was the big one, and Rogers, for instance, in their revenue stream. So they could collect and mass a lot of contingency money quickly, whereas we wouldn't be able to do that and still operate and function under these departments here. You start pulling out ten percent of their revenue and tuck it away for a contingency, you would have an immediate contingency, basically, because you wouldn't be able to run your department.
Why would I want you to write that ordinance?
Right.
So we're just waiting on you to write it, and that would be reflected in next year's budget, whatever we do. So I guess the sooner the better.
You got it done?
I'll have it by the December.
I, you know, and you say there's two options, options, buy, buy the department, or just kind of taking it off the top and then breaking it down, or?
The departments for water sewer and street, they stand alone, because they're not pulled out of the general funds or restricted funds, these departments are. So whatever money you take out of their revenue stream, or you, you earmark as their contingency fund, that they're mandated by ordinance to maintain, um, the, let's just take, uh, planning for, I mean, uh, parks, for instance, one million, two, one million was our benchmark for the parks department, and then we dropped it with the incident that happened with the bridge, and then with the splash pad, and the need to fund that, and provide more funding, and ultimately change orders, and so we dropped it to three quarters of a million, it went to a half a million, and now it's a quarter of a million. And that's dangerous, but that needs to be built back up. But if they had one event hit like the pavilion, and they, they have an issue at the pavilion, that could easily take more out of that one department's potentially earmarked restricted money that you're going to have to consider as a, a city council pull from a pool to say, well, we've got a lot still here that's in the pool, we decide how we're going to spend it. You contribute, we pull it and use it to dispense it based on need. And then the department that pulls it has to pay it back. That's how, that's how it works, so. That's just my quick thoughts over it, you guys may have your own, but I'll, I'm in the process of doing exactly what Travis did, and that's looking at some of the actual ordinances that are out there and kind of doing a mashup of it, make it more pertinent relative to the City of Greenwood's operations.
Thank you, sir. Uh, department reports, questions from council. Most are here tonight, thank everybody for presenting. Questions for the department heads.
Yeah, I just appreciate you, Mayor, and mentioning about the places, uh, place departments. Did you say what that thing was?
Motion, motion.
Yeah, you know, uh, it was a, uh, it was very impressive, you know, and I think Chief Hopp did a, did a great job. I like refreshments too. It was very good progress.
I think you can thank his wife for those refreshments, I'm pretty sure.
Well, I did a great job. It wasn't just good.
And that's open to public, Chief, that correct, I mean.
Could be.
Oh, I'm sorry. It depends on the amount of threat that refreshes.
I'll pray for you. It's definitely open to the council and the city.
Sure, sure.
I had a question for parks.
Yes, sir.
How, how did, how did the Freedom Fest seem compared to the ones in the past?
Freedom Fest or all?
Oh, I'm sorry, Fall Fest, Fall Fest.
Same amount of, same amount of vendors as last year, same amount of food trucks. Um, and everybody just talked to me from a vendor perspective, said that they made these five hundred bucks. I'm a fairly short man around.
Social media is reporting, not sure if they're all real positive, people, they blown in good, you know, a bit of break weather, Casey ordered that.
I thought, I, I know, I know you were there with the trees, did you guys get them all?
Well, but it seemed a little off, usually we give out more and I have to plant less. And I just wish, it just seemed just slightly a little off.
I think that little sputter of rain that was there in May would have hurtell a few folks, but. Danielle's still waiting on you to come plant, by the way.
She's going to keep waiting.
No, my, my wonderful boss is going to come take care of that for me this week.
He's wonderful, all right.
I'm getting little girls to keep running the show.
Oh, they'll, they'll run something.
I thought, I thought it went well. It just, we had more left over, which I can adjust in the tree board meeting.
Sure.
You know, how we do things, or, but I just, I thought the tenants seemed to be a little bit off.
Well, and I did see some people asking questions, are there any trees still available that people that didn't get them prepared yet?
Well, there were until about an hour and a half ago. We, we put them down the trail, which we always do, hopefully all on public property, not guaranteeing it. So, but, uh, no, and I mean, if, if you know, and this may not be the right, but quickly, if you know people, I mean, if they're wanting, we do this every year, if, if they'll call me, I have some churches that'll call, and I just drop them off going into town. Uh, and there's some other residents will call, and I'll just drop them off coming into town, and I take the rest of them up there. We, you know, Ralph is my help, so me and Ralph kind of transport them and do all the work getting them here, and I'll, I'll just, I'll drop them off if there's a request.
You know, there's people that learned about it because they heard it was there, and then after the fact go, oh, I, I feel that, so that would have stood as a general question for them.
You know, one thing that I've become aware of this year that I've never been aware of before, that just, people would come and they immediately stand in front of our table, because they knew we'd take information. And I said, you look like somebody who's just come to get a tree, and he says, that's the only reason I'm here. And I said, really? And they said, yeah, we come to try to get away every year. And then the guy behind him said, yeah, I'm going to start showing you pictures. He said, this was five years ago, and he's showing me one with his dog in front, and he said, that's two years. And I, I never really had thought about people just showing up just for that reason and having such a past, but. But, yeah, I will drop them off, but we're out now. Because we just planted a whole bunch of them.
I don't know, if the mayor did show up to plant those, there's two in her friend's garden.
Yeah, she's looking for four, I can give you Danielle's address.
I want to commend, well, not Jeff. That's a weird way to start. The overlay here on Bell Road finally, finally got done, I think we changed the sign about fifteen times, because they kept putting this off, but it finally got done, and it looks great, the strapping looks great. Wish we could do more than we do, we have one plan to do later on Nashville, so making some progress with the street overlay too, so. Uh, and then we're going, do you know any more questions for the department head, we'll move to council four. Everybody have anything?
I'd like to tell council that I was asked by the municipal league to put on a couple of online trainings. One was for preparing minutes using, utilizing AI, it was about an hour long, Karen Curry and Dylan McCloud, the, the AML were co-hosts with me on that. And another one was, um, doing proclamations using AI. That's their first proclamations ever, like little tutorial thing ever put on, that was pretty fun. And they got it recorded, and we're going to re-record the proclamation one, that they're putting on their ASAP education, and where all these officials can access that.
Consider an AI policy, why would that AI write?
We're talking about that this morning.
I mean, yeah, that's what I was teaching others, you know, to help utilize, and they, it was kind of neat.
Congratulations, you're representing Greenwood.
Yeah, it was for me.
Just by way of, we can say this announcement now, uh, thank a whole lot of people for a lot of prayers, uh, our friend Eddie Gopson is gravely ill, and he reports that he's coming home, and he's out of the woods for now.
I called Stan this afternoon to check on him, and Stan goes, I think he's going to be okay. Sorry, I think he's, I think he's the only way home.
Oh, at four thirty, he was in Tulsa airport, so he, he should be.
He'll be home by now.
He's not?
No.
No? Is there anything about budget sessions? Oh, yes, thank you, okay.
Keep in mind that the mayor wants to have the meetings first before releasing it to a study session with the council, uh, wants to be apprised of where we're headed and give his advice to some of the budget issues. So I have a session scheduled on, I believe, not normally yet, but Danielle, I think on the tenth, that's ago, with the street, and on the fourteenth is okay with?
Correct.
Okay, so we have those, and then, um, the Parks Commission will get another run at theirs on the eighteenth. So between the end of November and December, we're going to have to have study sessions with you guys. So how do you want to do that? Do you want her just to ask if the date is okay, and how you hold it that way, or do you want to set a date for these?
The three you just said, we're, we're looking again, I have the, those are, those are.
Those are for a meeting.
Oh, yeah, this is just internal, and then, yeah. Yeah, so we're looking primarily in December, or November?
Um. See, the water wouldn't be to you, budget?
Waters is having their budget session, and I'm going to be tenth, so next Monday.
Correct.
It's probably going to need to be December for Mayor Kinslet to attend, he's going to be gone.
Yeah, I just got some notification today, I'll be gone in December or something, but it'll be around Christmas, so.
Yeah, we'll hopefully do these before. So the first part of December, the only date that's bad for me is the tenth?
December the tenth.
Uh, parade is at first for the eighth day. It's the eighth.
The parade's the eighth?
The parade's the eighth.
That's when you have the city council scheduled.
Yeah, we're going to have to reschedule that council meeting then, I guess.
You can't have it first?
Yeah, we can, we're going to have to move it up.
I have it on first.
Yeah.
I thought we already did that.
City calendar.
The city calendar says it's on the evening.
So everybody take a note, that we're moving that up to December first. If you don't already have it.
I'm, I'm, I'm available at the second, third, fourth of December. Any kind of meeting?
Well, he appears on the second of December.
Okay.
So we have it on Thursday.
I mean, if we can avoid the board that one, because we have that CSC, so, I'm just going to afford, because our CSC.
I would say as you guys get closer to finalizing, the budget will be more, but just set that date.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure you kept it, some dates in your head that were better than others, so we can work around that.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, nothing. Just, I have a question for me on, on, on the election. The sixth of this month, which is Thursday, I guess that will be thirty days from last council meeting, when y'all passed the ordinance sending the election and everything, so it will then take effect on, on that date, and who notifies the circuit clerk?
I've been in contact with, with the attorney of the election commission and asked her, what all, who all do I need to notify, and there's only one remaining, did you see the email on it, one remaining issue? Yeah, I sent you an email on it, actually. Um, there's some ballot language, but it does not require another ordinance.
Right, right, that's what, make, make sure that we've got, well, we've got, well ahead of that, so.
Yeah, I definitely am plugged in to make sure our office can do that.
You mean the ballot language might change?
Yeah, our ballot language is long and lengthy, and it's just going off of what we did before, I believe, but she can, she sent me, and she just wants to know what we want to do, and, and all it takes is an email from Travis or myself, that, shorten it up so that it's not this long narrative. And, uh, what's been harling, she, she gave that example, right? And it was a lot shorter, more concise, and just easier to understand when we see it, so, uh, I want to change it too, but she said, she showed what's been harling is, but, um, um, it's, the ball's in Travis's court, just.
Can we see that?
Yes. Um. Do you want me to just like email it to you, I'll just email it to you, and let me see what she's talking about?
Or, when, when does it have to be put forward? When does she have to know?
She doesn't know.
Is, if we put it on the next council meeting in public, is that too, too long?
It's a real issue.
I mean, you, you don't have to.
Travis, no, we've looked at it, and we think we're okay by next council meeting, but it would be under ninety days, and that's a little scary.
Well, she said it did not require another ordinance, so that's good. It's just a decision on the way it reads. And, uh, the verbiage for the ballot is really long on ours, it's, it's really long.
So can you just read off what she had, what she's giving you?
She said, please see the below request for clarification from Amanda Craig. Um, I know that you were following past protocols and language for this, and this is the first time we've been asked about this clarification, from my memory. Um, actually, that doesn't make any sense. I'm sorry, it's, it's this weird, the way it shows up on the phone. She said, I see your submission for review to ensure my response is appropriate for what was submitted regarding the language of your ordinance, the wording you're using is typical and generally aligns with standard practice, however, there are a few areas we may need to consider. Number one, we'll need to include a clear header, something along the lines of special election, City of Greenwood. For the title, you can use seventy, point seven-five percent sales and use tax ordinance and custom. As for the for and against sections, I've seen this handled a couple of different ways. In some cases, all the explanatory language that follows for and against fits directly on the ballot. In other cases, that language is used only as a ballot text, and the ballot itself lists just the for and against options. Uh, I recommend confirming with your city attorney whether the additional language after for and against is intended to appear on the ballot. So that long paragraph, she didn't know if that was intended to appear on the ballot. Um, it's best to verify this intent before finalizing. And then she attached a snippet for, for us that lays out Longing and Fort Smith, what theirs looks like, and, and that was from a recent special election. She just needs clarity from you or your attorney on Congress, as she said. Does it tell you?
Sure, I just wanted to know what, what they're, what they're reading on the ballot.
Yeah, this is the for and against, that, for instance, what the City of Barling has, for and against, it's very clear, you can see a couple of paragraphs, and ours is, it's really massive.
Yeah, I'll kind of go with, with revenue, but I'd like to kind of, you know, preview it, or whatever, preview it, you know?
Yeah, I was waiting for Travis to tell me what he thought.
And, and the, the data of voting again is March, or? And, and the, the data of voting in is March 3rd, March 3rd or?
That's the primary, yeah.
So you said it was close, but we wait.
Yeah, it, it, maybe we went round and round and round on that statute. There's no statute that said how many days will we do it. It would end up in 70, what the charter says.
70 days before the election is when it must be filed with the county clerk's office. You're saying circuit clerk.
Yeah.
I usually do not contact them, so it's the county clerk. And I want you to know I've already filed those ordinances. They are filed.
Yeah, they're filed. Well, that, that's my question, make sure that we got that notification to them. They're timed on.
Well, even after I filed them, that's why I emailed Amanda Crady to say, is there anything else I need to do? Because I have filed them with the county. Like, is it just going to sit there in the clouds and?
Right.
No movement, you know, I just want them to know, oh, it's been there. We've done our part and I want proof from the ones that powers the need that that's all they expect of, or need for, for now. And supposedly, you know, have that and that's the, this is the only question remaining. And this is just clarification for the ballot, how it looks to go.
Okay, I was on vacation all last week.
Yes, yes.
You got my reply. I was out and you know that.
Yes, yes.
So if I could have some time off, I'll get back to you.
Definitely, you're welcome. Didn't mean to act like, imply that you aren't on it, you know, I just thought, I think you probably got buried in your stuff.
Probably.
Yeah.
Good luck. Good luck.
Yeah.
Outside here. Okay, so.
Some point, we're going to know what's going, how it's going to read.
Okay, and, and it's fine if we present it the way we have it. But it's just a lot longer and I think she just is being cordial and double checking, does the City of Greenwood really want this too long as a paragraph on the ballot? And plus, they've got to, you know, print all of ballots.
Well, I think it's important for this group to be set or happy or satisfied with how this looks because you're, you know what that's going to look like to the citizens that are going to vote on it. And you want it to present in the best way that you can, simple but yet makes sense.
Definitely want it clear.
Yeah.
And not ambiguous.
Confusing, yeah, yeah.
Definitely want it to act, you know, that it's not a new tax. It's a continuance of existing. Just, you know, you always refer back, in the next 10 years, we'll be constantly referring back to this was what people did the check mark on. And I just, a little bit concerned with what it looks like.
Yeah, can we not, done questioning, utilize what we did 10 years ago? And look at, or take a look at that and see?
That's what we did.
That worked? I mean, is that a?
We did and, and that's what it was.
That's what it was, it was that long.
Yeah.
Was it, was that it? Or they had a lot much meat in it? Okay.
And Travis, did you ever see the question I put out there? Do you know if we can print on signs, this paid for by your city sales and use tax? I think I think it can, as long as you don't promote, vote yes, no.
I guess I didn't see that either. We're, we want to put a sign on this splash pad saying, I'll use that for example, your city sales and use tax.
Is that what I paid for?
Just use that example. Some of it did, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, whatever else projects are intent, not to say, oh, yay or nay. Informant of, this is what paid for.
I think it's okay.
I mean, our doc does it, so.
Yeah, it must be okay.
If, if your highway project, you got to thank city for paying.
Your once-in-gasoline.
It's getting to the trouble.
I just wanted our city attorney's blessing.
Yeah, before we, so we'll make that a little sign, just make sure he's.
I think it's okay.
10 years ago, the city, the city sales and use tax passed. So whatever we did worked.
Right, that's what I was saying. Yeah, that was 20 years ago. I have, I was wearing a floaty in the square 20 years ago.
First time around.
Of course, of course. Imagine me wearing costumes.
Now you got to watch.
Natural. Yeah, we, we saw, but Casey got that though. Anybody else have anything? Not, would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, yes, good night, appreciate it, and good luck then.
Thank you.